I'd like to call the board work session to order today. And the first item on the agenda is committee member nomination from the golf committee.
So next week, the board will consider their recommendation from the golf committee. The golf committee met on April 10th and they have nominated Susan Nuttall for a second term. So we're not voting today, we vote next week, but that's one of the items we're going to be covering.
And just to refresh people's memory and audience, this is new this year that the golf or the committees themselves bring up candidates that they have voted upon and then we approve and move on and get it back to them. So this is our second set. We did leaks last time and this time it's golf.
Correct.
And rec will be bringing theirs probably next month.
Yes, and I think golf is going to have one additional position to fill.
Okay.
So, and potentially more depending upon how the election goes.
That's true.
The next item is modifications to policy 1.12 in Article 3.5.A. And these are changes to the attendance for board members. You can see in that paragraph that I've isolated. Now you have the whole thing, both policies, the policy and the article, they're both available in their entirety and they're available on the POA's website at this time. But the main change you'll see is currently if a board member is absent for three consecutive regular meetings, and when we say regular meetings, that is the fourth Thursday of the month. So that's the main meeting. Or if they move, they miss four regular meetings in an organizational year during a term year, okay? They don't have to be consecutive, so you could make one, miss one, make one, but if it adds up to four. So that's how it's currently written. The concern that the Rules and Regulations Committee had was you could effectively miss one-third of all of the regular meetings and the way it's currently written, you could miss the GM, every single GM meeting, you could miss every single work session meeting, and you could miss just shy of four regular meetings and still be in compliance. And they felt the Rules and Regulation Committee did not feel that that was reasonable. So they indicated that if a board member is absent from one-third of the GM meetings, the regular meeting, the work session, and the regular meetings, or any special meeting within a six-month period. So if a person is egregiously absent during a six-month period, the board could elect to have that individual removed from the board. Now, I will point out, there have been situations in the past where a board member had a medical situation and the board felt that that was a reasonable excuse and allowed that person to miss a couple of months' worth of meetings. That would be at the discretion of the board. But this, the phrasing of this policy, the way it is now, adds further importance of the board member attending all of the meetings, giving them a reasonable number of meetings that they can miss, and shortens the timeframe from a year to six months. Because you could actually, you could have a board member missing a large number, the way it's currently written, you could have a board member missing a large number of meetings over an entire year before the board could act on that. Now it shortens it down to six months. Any questions?
Jim?
Yeah, I voted to move this forward from the Rules and Regs Committee, and I believe we all did, and it was a suggestion from David Brandenburg. And nonetheless, I will, I do plan to vote against it if we keep carrying it forward. I just personally think it further dissuades working people from volunteering to be appointed or volunteering to be elected to this board. I think there'd be other means for a board member to be updated by Tom or the chair when they miss meetings, especially GM meetings. So I just think it subtly puts that extra onus that we will not get working people on the board very often.
Question I have first, and then I'll let you. All meetings are okay to call in to attend and they are counted as present?
Yes.
Okay. So that would be one. Bruce, go ahead.
I believe it's the responsibility of the individual that's running for the board to talk to his or her employer so that they have an understanding of what this person is doing and permit the absences to attend board meetings. And it's discouraging if you have an AT&amp;T or a Walmart breathing down the necks of people who have been elected to the board and then insist on them working relative to these meetings. I don't think these meetings are that much of a burden, number one. Number two, it should be who? Walmart or AT&amp;T or whomever? That they have an individual on the board of the POA. But that's my opinion. That person needs to take that responsibility upon themselves.
An example here is Mr. Welchel, who, the esteemed Mr. Welchel, who has adjusted his employment on many occasions to be able to attend meetings, but he's still employed and I'm grateful that he has, but still, he's more of a sole proprietor than not working for a company per se.
Well, that's right. And for those of us who remember Andrew, poor Andrew just got in a pickle. I mean, he was on the board, but he felt pressured, I think, by AT&amp;T that he needs to be on the job. So he could no longer be on the board and he resigned of his own accord.
Mike, do you have any opinion? You're an employed person.
You know, I think it's hard when it comes to being in the middle management world, which by and large, there's some senior positions here for a lot of companies, but most folks are pretty middle management account brokerage here, and so they don't necessarily get to relay the impact of the position to their superiors who don't live in these communities. So I think that that's something to keep in mind, to Bruce's point of the gravity or the specialness of getting to serve for this board is going to fall on sometimes deaf ears. But, that being said, I do think the majority of the people that would run for a position here do have a pretty good grip on how much time it would take. If we can set that tone early and for member elections and the recruitment of new board members, I do believe the POA could do a better job of presenting it as a non-retired opportunity. And so that could probably be a better way to recruit more people and then we can solve how many meetings they come to after that. Because I think when you have somebody of value on your board, you're going to find a way that they can still give value to you and it's not always in their physical form. So, that's my opinion.
Other questions or discussion? Pat?
I'm just concerned about persons who are perhaps hourly employees, you know, or who have to work specific, you know, they are paid by the hour, okay? And generally speaking, they don't have the latitude of a salary person for absence from their job. I think that one thing that we can do as a board is, and we have in the past, and I hope that we get more serious about it, is should we have people who are employed and do have fork schedules that are fairly strict, that we accommodate those people and schedule meetings at times that may not always be the most convenient for us, but that are, make it easier for those people to attend.
David?
At the current time, we have meetings scheduled morning, afternoon, and evening. I don't know how more we can spread our meetings around. We're trying to get as many people involved by spreading the meetings about. As far as hourly people applying for board positions, I haven't seen that in the past and I don't think we would see that in the future. I agree with Bruce when he says a person contemplating a board position probably would do well to clear it with their employer. And you would think that any socially conscious employer would want their employees to be involved in their community. And the number of times that they would be away from work for one to two hours, I don't think it's a burden. And that's why I brought this up, that I think a person making a commitment to the board is making a commitment. And they should know that full well going in and stand by it. And if they don't do it, we don't want them.
Okay. Along that same line, I think that last year was the first year, or was it this year's first time that you had meetings beforehand to explain the commitment of the board to possible candidates?
Yeah, we've, this is the second year we've done it to try and explain what the commitment level is. And I think those meetings have been productive. I think it's clarified to people what, those interested in running for the board, I think it's given them a picture of what they're getting themselves into, the time commitment and so forth.
So they know ahead of time before they go out and solicit names and turn it in? These are people who've taken out papers or contacted?
Yeah, yeah. I think it's important for a potential candidate to understand what they're getting themselves into.
And are there people who decide it's not a good idea because of time commitment?
Prior to us doing this, so you go back three years ago, we received approximately 70% of all applications that were picked up, 70% were submitted. After we started having informational, it dropped down to about 40%.
Okay.
That wasn't our intention. Our intention was to educate, but I think that some people walked away from that knowledge and realized that maybe this wasn't a good fit for them.
And when we talk about three meetings, the GM meeting, the work session, and the board meeting, that isn't the extent of it for the board. So there are other meetings as well, and so it does make a big difference. Patrick, you had something?
Yeah, Doug, did you write this?
Yes.
Okay. Can you tell me what the definition of special meetings of the board is?
There's various times that a special meeting would be called outside of the three normal, like we had one on Tuesday.
Executive session.
An executive session would fall into that category.
Okay. I would almost ask for an amendment to this or in addition to this. I think that service on the assigned committees for board members is important. I think that if you are going to VA's between this committee and the JACs, that if you are to serve on the Rules or Regulations Committee, if you are to serve on the Audit Committee, if you are to serve on any other committee, that is equally important.
Why aren't those special meetings?
Well, that actually-
I didn't know if that was covered here.
That was discussed in the Rules and Regulations Committee, and I can't remember which board member, which committee member said. I thought it was Bruce. I think Bruce said something in nature that if we included in this list the liaison committee positions, then that would really put a burden, an undue burden upon that person. I agree that a board member should attend as many meetings as possible, and we've given them the leeway of one-third, they can miss one-third, but one of the board members felt that that was maybe too high of a threshold.
And for clarification, the special committee meetings are different times and the board member selects which one they choose to be on, so hopefully it fits their time schedule. They know ahead of time.
Just one more attitude on my part, and I'm fine if I'm the only person, but having worn a POA management hat in my career a couple times, it seems to me the fine line between a volunteer unpaid board who should deal with policy and not operations, that because we have so many meetings, so many committees, so many task force, that that fine line starts to disappear for the detriment to our staff who ends up meeting with committees and boards all the time and not able to get their job done. And I've suffered through that myself on a couple of occasions.
And I think that what the committee is trying to accomplish, and I'm going to use an example from my last community, that way I'm not pointing any fingers at anybody at this community, but we had a board member that had lost their motivation and was missing the equivalent of all the GM meetings and missing all the work session meetings and was just barely going to enough regular meetings that they were still in compliance. But if you added up all the meetings that they should have been at, it was pretty egregious. And so they were effectively walking in to the regular meeting with limited knowledge as to what was being discussed by the board. I mean, the board right now is having a healthy discussion about whether to change this policy or not. And if a board member was absent and then attended next week and voted one way or the other, are they voting from a place of knowledge or not?
Last thing here, I think this is also a role of the executive secretary or whoever's keeping minutes and notes in this, and our ability to allow people to contribute with our recaps of this stuff too. So, you know, there's the play-by-play and then there's the color commentary. And the color commentary is the healthy discussion that you're talking about so people can flesh out ideas properly. And so when people are able to be here, or even when we are and we're not, I mean, I can look across the room and some people are lost in thought, you know? And the recaps of how we set up these things and how our decision trees are made will always be more valuable than just the play-by-play. And so maybe in 2020 or beyond, we can think about how we capture these minutes so they tell a deeper story for people that are able to be here, or even those to refresh ourselves.
David, you've come up.
I have absolutely nothing substantive to add to this other than, how many more of these meetings do I have to miss before I get my butt?
I'll call you frequently, David. Do not let that happen. We have, Mary or Jerry, comment?
Actually, some corporations encourage their employees and in some cases reward them for participating in boards like the, just like the school, the high school requires kids to allow community service. I think that this is very cumbersome on a rolling basis. I'm guessing Tammy would get stuck with it, trying to keep track of who missed a third. And I mean, it would have to be every month she does this and, I don't know, it's sort of like Big Brother watching over you. So I don't agree with that.
Any others?
I just say from a practical standpoint, it just gives the board options, whereas before, you were kind of handcuffed on, you know, these specific meetings. And it's generally an opportunity for the board to approach an individual and say, hey, you're missing too many meetings, you know? And to gauge their intent. The purpose of the, in my perspective, the purpose of the change is to allow the board additional options should they be encountered with something they need to address, like Tom said, and not have to wait, you know, nine months down the road.
Could we not then add something that implies at the discretion of the chair as opposed to, I mean, if I was running for the board and I read this, I'd think long and hard if there were, you know, if I was going to be watched that carefully in terms of how many meetings I come to. But like somebody said, you know, personal illness, you'd get a pass on that and there could be other situations too. And on the other hand, people can, anybody can attend a meeting via teleconferencing.
Mr. Brandenburg?
I think, Mary, it raises that director may be removed. So I think the discretion part is there. And as you point out, you know, we have a lot of different options for attending. These meetings are now recorded and you can get them online and watch them. So you can get informed in what the discussion is and show up, you know, to voting time. Previously, you know, we had people showing up to vote and all the information they had is what they were reading because they had no contact. And, you know, that's the thing, there's a difference between trying and fulfilling the letter of the law. And, you know, so the board is going to have to make those decisions one by one as they happen. And, you know, I'd like to see people more involved, whether it's by phone, you know, or catching up online when they can. You know, if they catch up online, obviously they don't have a chance for input, but at least they're trying.
But that would not count towards their attendance?
Not unless they're present by phone.
Right. Pat?
I just asked Tom, I said, I didn't realize that the policy was here. But the words that precede this are really important. That is, cause may include, but is not limited to. You know, and that gets to Mary's point. You know, they can be removed for a cause, but is not limited to. And this is just an example, and there may be other things that are even beyond anything we're considering or that's considered here that would be representative cause. So I think this is an expanded example of, you know, just a simple, this is a for example and EG, you know? And so it's that and there's still that other caveat, that cause, that that's mine.
Is the board allowed to take a two-month leave to be off?
Yeah, I mean, that would go into their explanation for why they're missing meetings to the board.
I'm thinking of, most of us at their age, if you have aging parents and you have to go to where they are for a couple of months, it would preclude you being here, obviously, or something of that nature, or a child or whatever the case may be for an extended period of time. But I could take a leave of absence for a couple of months and not count against me.
I think it's important to communicate that with other board members.
Yeah, okay. Anything else? Do we have enough to move this forward to next Thursday? And we do have several proxies, so you may want to get with whoever your proxy's with and determine your vote on this particular issue for next Thursday.
Just a reminder, if you submit a proxy, well, first of all, we have a couple of people missed, missing next week, so just a reminder to submit your proxy. And just a reminder, you can give your proxy without any stipulations to a fellow board member, or you can stipulate. So you can say, Pat, I'm going to be missing the meeting and you're going to be there and I want you to vote blank on this provision. Or you can just say, Pat, I would like you to vote on my behalf the way you vote. So you can do it either way. But if you're going to stipulate, you have to tell us how you want to vote.
Jerry?
Do you need a motion to move it forward?
No, it's just if we had eight against, we'd probably let it die right here, so.
I might have one comment.
Please do.
You know, each of us are voted upon by the membership to represent the membership. The general membership cannot attend these meetings, most of them, many of them at the same time. That's why we're elected, so that we can represent them and to be at these meetings. And if we're not here, we're not representing them. So I think it's very important that we really seriously look at it, and if you're not part of the solution, you know, you're a big part of the problem. So I say that we move it forward. I was elected to various boards, school boards, so on, and every time I talked with my employer and said, do you sanction this or do you not? What are my bounds? And in all cases, you know, hey, go for it because you're representing not only yourself, not only the community, but the state, and so on. And that's what we do right here. And people that don't attend to them, you know, sure, they can listen in on phone, telephone and those kinds of things, but then add their comments to it. So I just think that it's important that many people enter into something with the idea that they're going to make the change. You know, oftentimes even into marriage, you know, well, I'm going to change the spouse. And it doesn't happen.
Good luck.
And so we try to meet the best that we can with all of the members. And I think it's up to the individual that if they really want to be a part of it, then they make some changes to accept what it is. When we go to work for somebody, we have rules and guidelines and so on to follow. If we don't like those, our option is try to change them, and you know what that's going to lead to? You're gone. So that's my two cents worth. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, let's move on to number four. Open forum. Comments from the audience. No one? Yes?
I've got a comment going back to the committee member nomination from the golf committee. And this is just a food-for-thought type of comment. Susan Nuttall has been just an excellent secretary for the golf committee, literally over the years. And she has put her hand up for chair of that committee. I have heard from at least one individual that a woman will never be the chairman of the golf committee. I find that disparaging. And I certainly would support someone like Susan Nuttall to be chairman of the golf committee. I do think it's time, no disrespect to you, Bruce, but I do think it's time that we have more women involved in the board. And certainly we have a lot in our management positions, which Tom oversees, but this is a case where someone like a Susan Nuttall is certainly deserving to run the golf committee.
I was chair for three years in the golf committee and Stevie Namar followed me up for one year. So there have been women.
I wouldn't hear that. I wouldn't hear them.
There have been women chair. Go ahead.
You mentioned Susan. I got a comment. I've been hearing a little bit around the village that information, false information is being put out about this person, that person has already decided to close Brittany. This came about as the golf committee is seeking input from the community. We asked the golf committee to do this and they're going to seek input on what the community feels. And what I'm hearing is you can't vote for this lady's husband for the board because she's already decided to close Brittany. And I don't know where all this false information gets started exactly. I got my suspicions, but I'm getting real tired of all this false information, Facebook, emails, just all of this stuff, letters to the editor, all of this crap that keeps coming out. I'm getting sick of it. And Susan is a target of this and she has been working very hard- And Susan is the target of this, and she has been working very hard for Bella Vista, for the golfing community, and to have people I golf with tell me, well, she wants to close Brittany. No. She's trying to seek input. And, I mean, I'm sick of that.
Any other comments?
We have a, there is a ADQ, the Arkansas Department of Environmental Quality, has called a meeting for this, for today, at noon at Reardon Hall. I would encourage as many of the board members to attend as possible, and I encourage the community to attend. So it's today, the 18th of April, at noon at Reardon Hall.
Okay. We've got announcements to go through. Please follow along, because there are some changes. So please put these on your calendars at home. The regular board meeting is next Thursday, of course. The GM meeting is Thursday, May 9th, that's the same. The work session will be moved to Tuesday of this third week. We moved to Tuesday instead of Thursday, and that's May 14th, and same time, 9 o'clock. Community input meeting on Brittany is Tuesday, May 14th at 4:00 at Reardon Hall. The annual meeting is Tuesday, May 21st at 6:00 in, yeah, at Reardon Hall. Board liaison and officers, that will be after the election, and they will choose a new chair and liaisons for the committees on Thursday, May 23rd at 4:00, and then the regular board meeting at 6:00 on the 23rd.
And the meeting on the 23rd, the board officer and liaison, I think it's pretty obvious, but that is the quote-unquote "new" board will be attending that meeting.
Anything else?
Can I ask, Tom, I thought that you had, or at least it was my impression, that the ADQ meeting today was, you thought it was gonna be a walk-in, you know, not a presentation, but rather a meeting with people to see what the situations are.
I don't know the format. I asked that question. I don't know the format. I do know that they've asked to set up seven tables, or is it eight? Eight tables with tablecloths and to have three chairs per table, and have the tables kind of spread out. That's what we're gonna do. They've asked us to set it up in a particular way, and that's what we're gonna do. So I really don't know the format. I'm kind of guessing, but I don't honestly know the format. But I encourage everybody to attend to get information regarding the Trafalgar Road Fire.
I have not seen any place that it says from 12 to 2 or anything of the nature. It's 12 o'clock meeting every place I've seen.
That is the press release that they put out.
Okay. Anything else? If not, we stand adjourned.